On June 28, 2022. If you would please, oh, sorry. I'm gonna call to order and Heber.
Here.
Commissioner Gosar.
There.
And I'm here, Sue Ibera. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open public hearing. Amendments to fiscal year 2021, 2022 Albany County budget. Are there any comments from anyone here in the room about the fiscal year budget 2022 to 2023? Yeah. Are there any amendments to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 Albany County budget? Anyone in the room? And how about online?
Madam Vice Chair, I move we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing for the amendments to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 Albany County budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose? All right. Open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 Albany County proposed budget. Any comments in the room? Any comments online?
Madam Chair, I move we close the public hearing for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 Albany County proposed budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. This time I'll open comments from the public. Were there any comments from anyone in the room? Not seeing anybody speaking. How about online? I entertain the motion to close the comments from the public.
I move we close the public comments.
Second.
We moved and seconded that we close the comments from the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Me.
Aye. That motion passes. Are there any disclosures, Commissioner Richardson?
I have none.
None for me?
And I have none as well. All right. Are there any considerations of changes to the agenda? Oh, and has any changes there in the room? Anybody online? Jennifer?
I don't have any today, thank you.
Okay. All right. So we have to approve the agenda?
We don't have a consent agenda.
Yeah, okay. So good. Okay. So let's move on to item seven. Present Laramie Regional Airport Annual Review for 2021, 2022. Amy.
Good morning, Chairman Gosar and Commissioner Ibera, Commissioner Richardson. Thank you for having us today. I wanted to do a quick overview of the airports and where we're at at this point. So we can go to the next slide. A broad overview of the airport this year. We've experienced quite a bit of growth this year. It's an exciting year at the airport. We've increased our staffing numbers quite a bit to get the airport into compliance, maintain that compliance and start to move forward with the growth aspect of it. We understand the statutory requirement to at some point have a self sustainability plan. So we are moving in that direction. We have an excellent board. I know the city and the county have worked together to provide us members of the board. Thank you for that. And we have a really good team out there, a team of employees that works hard. You have a leadership team. We did not have that previously. We now have a management team out there as well as a full staff that is supporting the growth of the airport. Next slide, please. Some of our triumphs at the airport this year. In June of 2022, we had the FAA out there. So this time last year, the FAA came out for an inspection and they were incredibly, they were incredibly helpful. We found, we had some compliance issues with the FAA that previously existed. We were able to sit down with them, provide our paperwork, and they were able to help us identify areas that we need improvement. We had about 35 action items after the FAA left that we needed to correct. We have corrected all of those action items except for one. We still are outstanding on our mass casualty event. We have to, every two years, we work with EMA and do a plane wreck. We are out of compliance now. That is scheduled for August 30th, so we're excited to have that done. Some other compliance issues is we got all of our RFP gear, which is we have a fire department out there. We have all new gear. Everybody is safe when they're out there. We have, sorry, I'm reading some of the other areas. Our markings, our signs, our, the runways are very safe. The grass is cut appropriately. Something interesting when we had our inspection on our grass, we had, it looked like a golf turf out there. It was beautiful. You would have been so impressed. I was. And then we find out the grass has to be between seven and 11 inches high. So we were too short. We had to let the grass grow out. So this year we have the grass be appropriate height. All of our signs, all of our signage, our lights, everything is perfect. So we're excited for our new inspection. We're having it this August 15 through 17, so they're coming out. So some big triumphs out there. Another major area for the airport is our audit. We have been working on our audit for 2019, 2020, and 2021. It has all gone out for completion. So we have a board that has worked diligently, Leah Rowan and Tracy Fletcher. Have worked closely with our CPA to get that out for audit. So we're excited that we are going to be compliances at that, at some point with our audits and our paper, our bookkeeping. So this will help us with YDOT and our grant compliance as well. Next slide, please. Our manufacturing building. Some of you are familiar with this building as you head out toward the airport. It's on the left-hand side. It has sat vacant for about the last year. We just leased it to Airloom Energy and they are an alternate wind company. They're trying to come up with alternate wind generation. So this is kind of an example of the track and how they're gonna be putting wind up. So they're gonna put this up at the airport with FAA approval. They've leased two acres of land to put this on for two years. And then they've released our building for the next three. So we're very excited to have them in the building. It'll be, it'll be some revenue generation and we're looking forward to have some neighbors. So they are now in there. Next slide, please. Some of our challenges, and I touched briefly on the accounting. When we got to the airport, we had, we did not have any current books. And we didn't have an audit done from 2019 on. That took us out of grant compliance. Some of our challenges this year, we hired James Childress, our Childress Accounting out of Cheyenne. They've come in and they're helping us work with that. We've received some payer, IRS notices. We didn't have our payroll taxes paid. They've been helping us with that, so we're getting that fixed up. And we've been working with some of our equipment. So grant compliance is you have, you can have equipment in service for so long and we have to be doing maintenance checks and regular, sure, we've seen on some of it, like our fire truck, for example, we have to do periodic maintenance checks and have record of that. So we're getting all of that into compliance. Those are some of our major areas, the finances and then our equipment out there. So moving forward, we're very excited to say we're getting that, where we need to have it. Next slide, please. SRA equipment, that stands for snow removal equipment. We received on the, the top left, there's a picture, we call that our over awesome. And what that is, is that is a plow in front, a broom in the middle, and a blower in back. The idea of this piece of equipment is it will take one person to clear the runway. So we can clear the runway effectively and quickly. The only catch is because we are a green crew out there. This is, I would say, we kept two employees from the previous administration. Everybody else are most senior employees about a year and two months. So we have a new crew out there. We did not get rid of our other snow equipment. We kept it just in case. And then this week we're having a new loader delivered. Those were projects that were pre-arranged prior to our arrival. Very excited about those because we've received this new equipment. Part of the grant compliance is we have to house them inside. We don't have any space to house them inside, so they have an S. We're down on the bottom right, that is our firehouse. They're putting the third base, that third bay on the left, they're going to do an extension for that. We put that out for RFP. Nobody bid on it because it supplies right now, so it's back out. But that is one of the things we're excited to get done, so we can have all of our equipment inside. Next slide, please. So at the airport, we plan on quite a bit. I'm sure you guys do a lot of that as well. So here are some of the things we have coming up. We're in the middle of a master plan, which I would say is probably the most important thing we're doing right now. That's a 10-year plan of where the airport is going to go. We have to dream date. If it's not on the master plan, it doesn't happen. And this is on the aeronautical side. So anything we can dream of, we're putting on the master plan. We are only on chapter two of this. It will take us another additional 18 months. We're going to open up to the community so that we can bring in local tenants. We can bring in community members and help plan where we're gonna head in the future on this master plan. But this is how we acquire all of our grants. Without a master plan, the FAA won't fund anything. So we're in the middle of working on that, kind of watch no traffic. And another thing that would be exciting to point out, in the entire state of Wyoming, everybody de-ices their runways. And by that, we lay chemical on the runways so the planes can come in and out, especially when we get an ice event. Jackson Hole does not. That's the only airport because they are a state park. We have never de-iced our runways. We got an emergency grant from the state. They're gonna help fund, so we only have to put $11,000 in. They're gonna help buy all the equipment and let us de-ice for the first time ever this winter. So we're very excited to be able to provide that service. It will help with commercial service, getting those planes in and out. So that'll be, that'll be a change coming up this winter for the airport and the community. Next slide, please.
Yeah, this was the next.
That's your next slide.
Oh, sorry, I'm still waiting. I'm like, hmm, okay. Sorry. So these are, these are kind of our operating expenses and our income. We are still working on our budget. We hope to have a meeting on the third Wednesday of this month. We will be meeting in our, with our board presenting the new final budget going into the next fiscal year. We're still working on it, still reconciling numbers, fuel numbers. Some of the areas we were able to identify places where, for example, if we look at our finances in the beginning, when we got in the fuel pricing, because the fuel was flexing, so it was just the swings of the fuel pricing. We have really got control of that and understand now how it works, what the markup should be at the beginning. I would say that was a challenge. That was not something I knew right away coming in, how to price fuel and do that. We now have that under control. So some of these areas where we think we could have done better. And in here, it talks about our funding that's coming up. And most of this funding, if you, we're spending quite a bit of this funding on our finances. So we're still expecting to put in quite a bit of funding until we have everything lined out and we're ready to move forward. Exciting news for the airport, we're gonna go to cost centers this year. That's our goal, meaning we'll be able to identify each area of the airport, almost like its own entity, and see where we have good cash flow and where we may need to infuse it or where we need to make better money. So we're moving in that direction. Next slide, please. I'll watch this time. Vision for the future. It's fun to talk about the airport. We're at a really good place where we're talking about how to become sustainable and what we need to do to get there. We're really fortunate in the fact, I don't know if you guys are all aware, that land that the airport owns is plum for sewage and water. So we are ready for a business park. We just haven't done it. It's sitting there. So we are talking about going into, kind of, we have a master plan for the aeronautical side. There's such a thing as a land plan, or you guys probably are much more familiar with this. But it's a development plan. So we're looking at setting some money aside and bringing in development, so we have a strategic way to grow the airport the best way possible. Some needs we've identified is, especially during the sporting events here, hotels fill up and a lot of our football teams fly into Laramie and then take buses into Cheyenne. So we'll watch all the tax dollars just leave. So they'll fill the ramp with the, you know, the 737 will come in with everybody. And then all the supporting boosters will come in. They all get on buses and go into Cheyenne because we don't have good places for the team or hotel rooms. So we've talked about what that would look like. We've talked about a restaurant out there. And most exciting, a short-term goal, when we talk about the vision for our future is diversions. We are 20 minutes from DIA. When Denver has weather or any sort of issues, they drop planes all over, all over Colorado for diversions to put in places to gas and go. That's where you land, you fill your aircraft with gas, and you take off again. We had a phone call yesterday. We're trying to align ourselves so that we can become a diversion station. It's a very, a huge revenue stream. We're able to tap into that. Yesterday, they agreed to bring us in. They're gonna help us grow. They're gonna write a letter of intent for the board. So we're very excited that we're gonna start bringing in airliners now to do some gas and go. So that is something, that is a direction we're moving. With that, we'll need some changes. We'll probably need a bigger fuel tank, which is great news. Possibly in the future, someday we'll get a longer runway so we can bring in heavier aircraft coming in and out. So.
Do we have enough real estate to do longer runway?
We do. It's about a $10 million project. We've talked to the state. We have to establish a need before we can get that cost shared. With the airlines coming in, if they really find that Laramie is a strategic point for them as they come in, that is something where I think we can establish a need. But we've talked to them already and it will be need-based. But that is a huge revenue stream for us. Legislation passed this year, liquor. We don't need a liquor license to put a bar at the airport. It's something that is now, airports can do that. So this year, we're gonna put in a bar. We can sell packaged liquor and we can sell alcohol at the terminal. So that's kind of some of where we're looking in the vision, is just revenue generating ideas. Or, and as we do the master plan, we'll be looking at hangars and other space where the airport can actually generate some funds. So it's just, it's an exciting time at the airport. Lots of change, lots of growth on the horizon. And we're just trying to find the best way to strategically approach that. Next slide, please. Outreach. We are, we are starting to concentrate also. I have part of our team looking at best ways to include the public in the airport. I didn't spend a lot of time at the airport prior to my job out there. And I think that it's a beautiful place. The city, county, and the town squares have put a lot of money into the airport. So we're looking at different ways to bring the airport in. This is one of the ideas with FAA approval, we're gonna host a 5K at night. So we're gonna turn on all the runway lights, close the, we're gonna close the airport, turn on all the lights, the runway, and host a breaks. It'll be pretty cool. We've looked at other airports when they do it. Nobody in Wyoming currently does it, so we're looking at that. We've looked at things, maybe haunted houses out in the hangars. And we've looked at different ways to just generate money and bring people out to the airport so they can enjoy the space as well. So we rented, last year we rented the terminal out for some private events. So we look forward to doing some of that and really bringing the community out to the airport. So we do have folks, I will say, this is, my staff has completely done this. They're excited. They love to bring people out there. So this was their plan and they've kind of been working on it.
And what would that date be?
It's when the students come back. Do you remember the date?
It's the 17th of August.
So it should be fun. We, we can't host it yet until we get approval from the FAA though, because they would have to shut the runway down. And there's a little bit of concern when you turn on all the lights of flight for lifetimes to come in what that looks like. So if there's an emergency or something, so we would have, we're gonna have to talk through that.
Oh, yeah. If you close an airport, you're supposed to shut down the runways.
Right. And so.
Which means that it's open.
So that would be something that we just have to get approval. They do it. It's just a matter of we bring in our partners and make sure we're doing it appropriately. Next slide, please.
You run it, don't you?
It's gonna be fun. I think it'll be fun.
What is that?
Really, we just, as the, the whole staff at the airport just really wants to thank everybody for the support. It's been a challenging yet exciting year at the airport. I know we've received a lot of support from, from numerous individuals, the city, the county, the taxpayers, the general public. So just a very large thank you from our staff. I will say, this is, this is not a team of one. This is, everybody out there is working hard. You have, you have employees out there identifying issues. We didn't know where our issues, we have people out there coming up with solutions we didn't know were possible. You have a really good team out there supporting your airport right now. So just a big thank you to you.
Thank you, Amy. Commissioners, have any questions for Amy?
I do. I noticed that one thing that wasn't mentioned doesn't mean that I think that it was excluded. But how important is our airport for fire staging operations, while land firefighting? And is there, is that, can that be incorporated into?
It depends on the fire season. So we have an air, what is, what's the helicopter we have outside right now?
It's a Chinook.
So we have a Chinook that just arrived last week. When they come on, they bring on, so they bring on a whole crew. So we, I think that there's six or seven people in the crew. There's a Chinook. They bring a trailer and they bring a car. We actually base them at the airport. So if there's a fire close, it changes everything. We end up closing taxiways and we accommodate them. Currently, we don't have that need in this area. So it depends on where they base. Last year, they based a bunch of, they would rotate when helicopters came in. They would base in there and then they would take them out when there were fires. Because we didn't have too many local fires that they had to bring their attention to. Prior to my arrival, it's my understanding that there was a fire up here. They had them out in the fields fueling. They had so many helicopters there, they were fueling the fields outside of the secured area. So it is, we're definitely.
Does it bring their own fuel trucks?
Correct. I meet with them, in fact, today at 1:00. It's a very strategic location if there is a fire. Currently, we are, they're not utilizing us that way right now.
So, so if we planned accordingly, maybe that we would be more likely to be utilized.
Depending, they base them really depending on where the fires are or where they want them. So I think that's why they only stage one at our airport right now. And sometimes they pull them out altogether.
I was just curious if, if they didn't stage them here because we lack something or if it's just event dependent?
I think it's event dependent. There's a fee, so they pay when they come in. You negotiate in the link rate for what the fuel, what they charge them. They bring their own fuel tankers. It just really depends. A lot of, a lot of variables with the fire stuff. We certainly open the doors and welcome them, but they don't come too often.
Probably a good thing.
Yeah. I'm sure, and like I said before my arrival, when we had the fire here in the county, they were, it was full. I heard they were fueling up in the, actually in the fields by the airport.
Commissioner Gosar, any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Ibera. Amy, when do you suspect the audit will be completed? Both not only for, for the previous years, but then the year we're currently in?
Chairman Gosar, I'm gonna defer to Malia. She's our chairman, our board chairman.
Good morning. Commissioner Gosar. Basically, we have, right now, we've got the audit where we finally got a, we actually got an auditor. They prepared the modified accruals and things you have to do for the audit, James Childress. We believe it will probably be the end of August to have 1920, 21 done. So we did three years of audit in one year. So I would say by the end of August, September, we should be done with those audits. They're just starting preliminary audit work on them at this point. And then we'll have to turn around and do audit for '22. But we wanted to get through the 1920, 21 and get through the internal controls and the things that are lacking in those audits. And that's why we did it, one big review. And so that's what we're doing.
And Malia, thank you. Any surprises? And then the follow-up question, would you, are we gonna be able to see that, that audit at the commission, at the city council? So I'm sure of it.
Yeah, we can, they're gonna probably do a opinion, you know, an audit opinion. And, and I don't think it's going to be that good, but just to be honest. I mean, there's not any controls. There's, you know, there was a lot of problems with the accounting. So you'll get a qualified opinion. I don't think they're gonna do a management report. They'll do an internal, they might talk about internal controls somewhat, but there wasn't, I mean, there was no internal controls. You had taxes not being done. I mean, so, you know, we're, as a board and as a, as a new director, we can't really tell them what happened. We weren't there. So, you know, that's why we wanted '22 separate, so that when they do '22, they can say, hey, this wasn't in place, but the new board put this in place. So now we have, you know, some, some stuff in place so that when you do an audit, they can say, well, you had a finding on the last audits, but here's what we've done to correct that. So it's a huge report. It's probably just a qualified, just an opinion on the audit. And they, and you'll, we have from Childress our, you know, we have an MDNA management discussion. You know, that stuff we can publish, which is being done by Childress, who's our, really our accountant, because we're not doing it internally. That is, that, they're gonna publish all that. So yes, all that can come to the commissioners. You can read what the financial statements say, what the notes say, and then what the opinion of the auditors say.
So Malia, before I leave, thank you so much. I sit on as a liaison to the airport board. I'd like to thank you and Tracy and Jackie and Bob Suthers and Dan Johnson over at the city for being willing to be on that board. I know it's been a heavy lift and I know it's a lot of extra work and it's all free that you're donating your time. And so thank you very much. Have some familiarity of where we are and where we were. And there are two different worlds as far as I'm concerned. And so thank you and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor. And I just wanted to mention, and I wanted to thank the staff out there. They have worked tirelessly when we had the FAA audit and tried to just be in compliance for the first four to five months. And all the work the staff has done is just amazing. So appreciate working with them.
Amy, you just have one question. So you said you're fully staffed and they are fully trained at this point?
No, we currently have two individuals in training. And I say fully staffed, that depends if we take more on. So as, as we talk about the diversions, the excitement, and the revenue generation, if that happens, we may identify a need to hire more part-time. I think we're good with the full-time right now. We're not pledged to do another full-time position next year. I might bring on some more part-timers to offset the overtime. So it'll be, it's a delicate, it's a delicate balance of how much we're spending on overtime versus do I just bring in another part-time employee? This year, we had about $130,000 at the cost of attrition. So we really need, I need to stabilize the crew, get it to where everybody's comfortable and has the appropriate training so that they don't, they don't leave our position for $2 an hour somewhere else. And kind of, I'm sure everybody's dealing with that with employment right now. We've adjusted the pay quite a bit because what we're finding is we're putting all this, they become qualified firemen for the airport. All these other trainings we put into them, it's, it's no less than $7,500 worth of actual training for not even to include the OJT and the on-the-job training. And then to have them lock for just a few more dollars at another job. So we're, we're focusing on employee appreciation more. We are trying to do things. So it feels good and it's a fun place to work in addition to the appropriate pay. So I think we have a really good team. I feel very comfortable where it's at. We'll see how that works this year.
You definitely have the historical knowledge with some employees as far as anything needed technologically.
Yeah. So the technological piece, and I have a lot of historical knowledge too when it comes to aviation. I will say that Wyoming Airport Coalition, that's all the directors in the state of Wyoming, has been an incredible resource. So there is no way they would let us fail. They call, they check in. We go to meetings with them. I will tell you, they have been instrumental in the, in the success of our airport as we move forward to create pricing structures. We didn't have, I mean, we didn't have any leases out there. We didn't have any pricing structures or landing fees. They have been instrumental in guiding us. There's been a sounding board for us. We meet with them once a month and I call them all the time. So even as the staff rolls or they, they are, they are vested in the Laramie Airport, which was surprising. I didn't know if it would be a competition-based thing with everybody has their own airport and they all try to generate revenue. It's not been that way. It's a, it's a fantastic group. So they have been instrumental in our success as well.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
Pete, anything else?
Okay, I'm good.
Commissioner Gosar's remarks. Thank you to everyone involved with the airport out there as well behind the scenes and all. You have turned this around and it's amazing how quickly. Thank you. All there for the hard work, right? Everything.
You know, somebody I forgot to mention is we also use your HR. You guys are in an MOU with us for Christina. She has been instrumental in this. She's, I call her at 6:00 AM. I call her at 11:30 at night. She always plugs in and starts working when we have employee issues. So again, the support of the county and the city meant a lot.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Amy. All right. Let's move on to item eight. Present for approval the Albany County cattle guard replacement project for contractor bidding and direct the court to post the quest CBN and advertise the project. Jake?
Commissioners, thank you.
Commissioners, thank you. This is to, this project is just to start the bidding process for the Dunn Creek Road cattle guard replacement. We bid for about three weeks, and we'll come back after we get a contractor. We're two. And this is for three cattle guards and a little bit of asphalt replacement, striping that, or what it's for.
And Jake, you're thinking this project is going to be around $330,000?
Yes.
So I'm there to cut the road, build the foundations for the cattle guards and raise them. Because I think right now, there's, it's like dangerously uneven.
And that's the reason why we have to go out. We don't have the equipment. It's on asphalt and stuff, so we don't have the, nor the time that we're required to do it. That's why we're not doing it in-house, I guess.
Any questions for Jake? Commissioners?
Is that, I have a question. It's like, not a question a commissioner should ask, but it's like curious brain. Does that, can you buy precast, you know, engineered, all that's business box, you know, precast concrete, like a tray that that sits in, or do they have to pour those in place?
They build them in precast concrete bases in two sections. And then the cattle guards, the metal part just spits right into them. And then we'll come back after they establish the elevation of those cattle guards and pave up. So it's a little smoother than the next dangerous step.
So it's a kit. It's a Lego kit. It's degrading and the paving part that's the expensive part. The cattle guard and the, sort of the foundation for it isn't terrible
Yeah, labor-wise, for sure.
Yeah. All right. Thanks for indulging me.
Commissioner Gosar, any questions?
Uh, no, don't have any.
I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve item eight as presented, direct clerk to post contractor bidding and advertise the project.
Second.
We moved a second to approve the Albany County cattle guard replacement project for contract bidding and to direct clerk to post to cross CDNN and advertise the project. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Move on to item nine. Present, thank you Jake. Present for approval, the county road striping project for contractor bidding and direct clerk to post request CDN and advertise project.
Yeah, this one is for all of the paved roads except for Dunn Creek to be striped. And historically, Wydott did that, but this year, they said they didn't have the material and they were too busy. So we are going out to bid to, to get a contractor on board to stripe all the roads this year. So that's what this is regarding. And it's, again, it's to post it for bidding, not to award it to a contractor. Hopefully have that through as well, we've awarded to a contractor.
Any questions?
Jake, do you have a ballpark figure for what that might cost from Wydott, or do you have any idea?
No, we don't. Wydott always paints their own roads, and they didn't have any cost estimate options and protocols where we could research that. On smaller projects, we've gotten higher prices, but we expect this one to be, because it's such a large project, we'll get a large economy of scale, and the linear foot is going to be significantly lower. And we didn't have any comparable data to be able to put a cost estimate together.
And then are we, are we just kind of setting the contract for, for Wydott and they're paying, or are we paying where they used to just do it as a, something that went along with, with their business model, I guess?
That's a Rob question, for sure.
Wydott was the one that would apply the paint. We paid for the paint and then some services. We did pay before. Now that with the price of paint stuff going up, and as busy as they are, they just don't have the time to take our 46 miles of paved roads.
So then I guess to answer that question, again, this is just for bidding. And if we have costs that come in that, that are too extreme, we don't have to award it to a contractor. We can just put the brakes on it. Shelby?
Thanks Jake. Thanks Rob.
Thank you. Item, entertain a motion for item nine?
I move item nine as presented.
Sorry.
We moved a second to approve the county road striping project. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item ten, present for approval, resolution 2022-012, resolution transferring unencumbered or unexpended appropriation balances from one fund to another, and amending appropriations for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget of the county of Albany, Wyoming. Jackie?
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. Before you is resolution 2022-012, a resolution transferring unencumbered or unexpended appropriation balances from one fund to another and amending the appropriations for the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget of the Albany County, Wyoming. Whereas on June 28, 2021, the Board of County Commissioners for Albany County, Wyoming, adopted the annual appropriation of Albany County for the fiscal year July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Whereas Albany County pursuant to Wyoming statute 16-4-112 may transfer any unencumbered or unexpended appropriation balance or part thereof from one fund to another upon the request of the county budget officer. Whereas the transfer of the unexpended appropriations to the general fund is permissible under Wyoming statute 16-4-112, and the budget of the general fund may be increased pursuant to Wyoming statute 16-4-113. Whereas the county clerk as the county budget officer requests the transfer of unencumbered or unexpended appropriation balances to funds with overages to funds in need of additional appropriation to not cause overages. I am requesting that the Board of County Commissioners amend the county coroner budget to increase it $25,000 to allow us to amend before we spend. The above transfers and amendments in the amount of $25,000 be adjusted to the county's 2021-2022 approved budget.
Are we done with adjustment? Any questions, Commissioners?
I move that we approve resolution 2022-012, transferring $25,000 of unencumbered or unexpended appropriation balances for the 2021, 2022 budgets.
Second.
We've moved a second that we approve resolution 2022-012. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Jackie. Let's move on to item 11. Present for approval, a contract between Wyoming Department of Family Services and Albany County Board of County Commissioners for the purpose of setting forth the Community Juvenile Service Board for Wyoming statute 14-9-108A4 from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2024 in an amount not to exceed $63,008. Bailey?
Good morning, Commissioners. This agreement is from DFS for County Juvenile Service Board grant. This money, we do contract with the brothers and sisters for these services. That'll be on your coming week's agenda. But this is, this agreement just had to be signed by July, or yeah, by July 1.
Any questions for Bailey?
I move we approve item 11 as presented.
Second.
We moved a second that we approve the contract between Wyoming Department of Family Services and Albany County Board of County Commissioners, setting forth the Community Juvenile Service Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 12, consider for approval, fiscal year 2022-2023 Albany County budget. Tracy and Jackie?
Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to point out, before you is the total worksheet. And I don't know, Pete, if you have the public drive and you can access it, it's the most current version. I just wanted to point out some of the changes that were made since we last talked about budgets last week. First of all, in the general fund, I know I sent that happy email last week that the PILT money came in. It came in at $1,716,873. That was an increase of almost $85,000 from the previous fiscal year receipts. But more importantly, it was $588,605 more than what we budgeted for this current fiscal year. Of course, with that increase, that leads to more cash on hand. So in that note, I did increase the cash on hand to four and a half million on this worksheet to reflect where we are sitting as of today. That cash on hand does not reflect any of the departmental revenues that will be turned into us this week or on June 30, because we stay until all the money is on the books. Sometimes quite late. So Sunny is probably going to get pizza or something that night. I'm gonna probably buy her dinner. But anyway, it also does not include that the June 2022 property tax for motor vehicle receipts that our office takes in. So there's a lot of money that's still yet to be recorded and recognized. On that, with that changing that cash on hand amount to the four and a half million, it does leave a slight overage or surplus of about $272,000 that can be available to remain for unforeseen amendments, just like we had today. Or maybe you want to transfer to one of those special funds, such as the cash reserve or emergency reserve. That item can be for your consideration. There are notes on other funds on the 1% optional. I increased the cash on hand because there, everything that's, we had our last voucher run, and everything that's in there is in there. We've received the last of the sales tax money that we will receive in this fiscal year. So the cash on hand increased from just under $200,000 to $653,790. That leaves a surplus of 1% of approximately $391,000. That can be, once again, for those unplanned expenditures that arise through the year, because we all know those happen. Or we can transfer that to another fund if you guys choose to. Next, indirect aid, the cash on hand. I apologize, I don't remember what the cash on hand we had calculated at the beginning was, but it's now $614,126. That also should include anything, because the voucher run is done. And that leaves a surplus in direct aid of $506,184. And the last change that was made, that I made on behalf of the county road fund was, I did add an expenditure line for the $100,000 that can be moved for the equipment reserve in anticipation that you would want to do that. Those are the changes I have. I think Jackie may have changed who or to.
Thank you, Commissioners. And sure, Commissioner Gosar, I hope you received my email that I forwarded this information to you, so that you can see the changes from the initial notice of public hearing. To define what the notice of public hearing contained, the total general fund was advertised at $16474,914. There were changes to two line items within the general fund budget, an appropriation of an additional $57,108 that was omitted from the county attorney's budget. The wrong worksheet was calculated. Plus, $225,000 was removed from intergovernmental for the emergency management service contract with the city, leaving now a difference of $167,892 for now a total general fund appropriation of $163,322. In the estimated special revenue fund expenditures, there are a few changes that I would like to notate. In the employee health benefit, the advertisement read $1,982,35. That has an increase of $28,199 for a revenue amount of $20,0234. In the county road fund, adding the $100,000 to the equipment reserve, it was advertised at $160,000. Now we are anticipating $260,000 in that fund. The additional change is within Grant Nash. It was initially advertised at $584,636.9. We have an additional appropriation of $10,999.91 that was not spent in this current fiscal year for a total of $595,636. In economic development, we advertised an amount of $539,197. We did have expenditures in the amount of $2,523 to take that appropriation down to $536,674. We did not include impact assistance in our, in our initial notice of public hearing. So we are including a, an amount of $1,112,565. With the 2018 specific purpose tax, we advertised $3,570,574.28. We have an additional $245,954.28 to add to that appropriation to bring it to $3,816,528.56. From the total special fund advertisement of $13,570,794.57, it now has an increase of $1,495,130.84, bringing a total of $15,65,925.41. With the other special funds, the direct aid appropriations, we advertised $1,856,565. We had an expense of $76,505, bringing that amount down to $1,780,60. For the 1% optional sales tax appropriation, we advertised $1,74,763. We had a carryover of $37,400, bringing that total appropriation to $1,112,163. For the American Rescue Plan Act, we advertised $5,539,108. We had an expense of $113,979 to bring that appropriation to $5,425,129. For the county building reserve. For the county building reserve, we advertised the amount of three hundred and sixty three thousand, one hundred and eighty one dollars. We had an expense of one hundred and fifty seven dollars. Bringing that amount to three hundred and sixty three thousand, twenty four dollars. The total appropriation requirements advertised at sixty five million, two hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred dollars and seventy four cents. With these additions and, and expenses. That brings the total appropriation requirement now to sixty six million, three hundred and eighty six thousand, three hundred and ninety eight dollars and fifty eight cents. The total estimated special fund revenue had an additional amount of one million, four hundred and ninety five thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and eighty four cents. From the initial advertisement of thirteen million, five hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and ninety four dollars and fifty seven cents. And the total cash available for budget, including cash and reserves was reduced. Two hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and fifty four dollars. From the initial advertisement of fourteen million, three hundred and forty seven dollars. Three, pardon me, fourteen million, three hundred and forty seven thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and seventy one cents. With the American Rescue Plan Act, there was an advertisement amount of five million, five hundred and thirty nine thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. There was an expense of one hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy nine dollars. Bringing that amount down to five million, four hundred and twenty five thousand, one hundred and twenty nine dollars. Leading a total estimated total revenue for the proposed fiscal year. Twenty twenty two dash twenty twenty three Albany County that budget. In the amount of sixty six million, three hundred and eighty six thousand, three hundred and ninety eight dollars and fifty eight cents. That I present to you for your consideration and approval. Okay, so Tracy.
Just want to thank Kayla for reminding us that we do have one final consideration that is not in this budget as of this moment. We did discuss paying some payroll out of the ARPA funding for a potential real estate purchase. So I don't know if you want to proceed with that, it would not change the totals of anything in the budget currently, but it would change line items.
Any comments on that?
As I remember. We took it. The departments on the second floor, there was a figure that we could just use or we could pick a figure. And I don't remember, so I'm looking at Amanda and Kayla, I don't remember. Which was easier if it created a, you know, sort of a, an internal work. Challenge to do it one way or the other.
I think the number we were kind of looking at was one point five. Just because we don't know what the price of that building that you guys are considering is, the appraisal was to come in in July. But we just don't know yet and that would give us plenty of wiggle room. And I believe one point five is about a full year of all the second floor employees.
Or closed or.
It would be fine.
Yeah.
I suppose the problem is that we can't nail it down because you don't stay at full. You know, that's enough positions that someone might come, someone might go.
And the second floor employees, the reason we kind of picked those out is there are no grant funded positions on the second floor. So it makes things very easy for Amanda, the sheriff's office has been difficult in the past for other things. But just to me, maybe across the board is what we're trying to do.
Well, I. You know, just as a, which column is spent out of, I am totally fine with. Using ARPA money for this purpose. It's a unique opportunity for the county that we may not get again. And, and we need to. We know, we all know the reasons and so I'm, I'm fine, one point five million. I, I'd be interested to know what the chair would say.
Commissioner Barra and Commissioner Richardson, I, I'm also fine. I guess that would probably be a movement out of the ARPA funding into, I guess, cash on hand or, or is there a, a place that you guys would like us? That makes it more sense to put it, that money in so that we can make those accounting budget totals add up. How would you like us to do that Tracy or Jackie, do you have a thought on that?
Here can go sir, I believe how we would handle it is we would just do. And this was, we discussed it at length with our auditors, Carver, Flor and James. That we would make in a sense of contra expenditure account to deduct from the payroll. Which then it doesn't wreck any of the history going forward, but it has that negative, so we're under budgeting. And then we would also create a new expenditure line probably under the commissioners for that real estate purchase. So those, those two would be a wash and then the ARPA money, we currently have the total amount. Budgeted to be spent because we're anticipating using the full amount that way, we don't have to amend every time. So I, it's more of a mechanical accounting function. Does that help answer your question?
Do we need to make any line items in this budget or could we just approve this budget as presented? With that caveat so that we knew, hey, going forward, you guys have all, everything you need from us to be able to make the transfer happen.
I see what you're saying, I would say in the motion, you might want to reflect that. You would like to deduct one and a half million from the second floor payroll accounts and pay those from ARPA. And create a line item with under the commissioners budget for that same one and a half million. So that should be yes included in your motion.
And then the. Do you do the transfer upfront, like the ARPA goes into that account? That we create on the commissioner's side?
No, the.
Or does that happen?
Journal entries throughout the year as it will happen.
It's just, it's just happens as you go.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm happy to make a motion or any.
Need anything else?
Hope that's it, thanks Tracy, thanks Jackie, thanks Kayla.
No worries. I move that we approve fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three Albany County budget. But including that we. I'm going to say what you said, just watch. That we transfer one point five million from ARPA into an account to pay. Sal, salaries and benefits for second floor employees. And deduct that off from the.
Add a line item to the commissioners.
Yeah.
For one and a half.
For one year.
Yeah, this is for only one year, yes. I mean, I was thinking that, didn't I just say that?
You did, not the one year.
Gotcha.
Did you?
I did.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, to create a special account on the commission side that.
Oh, perfect, yeah.
Yeah.
Special account, I'm sorry.
Have a second?
Second.
It moved and seconded that we approved the fiscal year budget twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three with the caveat mentioned so eloquently by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries, we have a budget. Thank you everyone, all, all the hard work. Jackie, is this just for us to see, have people sign up the visitor?
Madam Chairperson, yes, that was the tool so that as I read the difference from the notice of what was advertised. To what you considered for approval today, just so that you had it available, should there be any questions. Can I also say?
This is your last one?
There's been a lot of work by a lot of people. And over time, it's gotten a little easier because of the involvement of all. The department heads and elected officials. It's bittersweet. I'm glad that moving forward, there are monies for future considerations by the Board of County Commissioners. And personally, I appreciate the guidance that you give to all of us. It's been a process that I will miss, but I'm happy to be a part of.
Thank you so much Jackie, I can't believe you'll miss this process. I know you put in a lot of energy all these years and I'm glad that's become easier through the years. Again, thank you to everyone out there involved with this, making it easier, I know still from a fairly newbie. You guys have explained things so well and I really do appreciate that, so. Commissioners, anything else?
Well, I would just like to second that Sue, I, I, I think. From the time I showed up, the, the process has gone from five days to maybe two and a half days. The budget books have been just amazingly helpful to a new person. And I know the work that it takes to put those together, so thank you, thank you for updating. Online, the P drive and all of that stuff to keep us engaged in real time. And then thank you to department heads and electives for taking the. Our advice and doing the, the flat budgeting and give us a narrative of, of the increases. That's so important for me to understand what that money is to be used for, really helps hopefully make better educated decisions on, on my part. And so thank you all, I know this is a tough part of the year and a tough, heavy lift. But I really do appreciate it, it makes it, I feel fairly confident that I know where we're putting our money and the reasons we're putting our money there. And so if any taxpayer were to ask me, I feel fairly confident that I can say we're spending money wisely and in the right spots. And then we do have a reserve account so that salaries going forward don't have to be dependent on the whims of an economy. But we can try to keep up with inflation and try to pay people a livable wage. So thank you so much guys, really appreciate it.
We have definitely gotten better at this.
Great to hear, look forward to easier times ahead as well. With no more business before the commission, I adjourn this meeting.
Thank you all, we'll see.